This is a regular meeting of Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January 16th. Please stand for our invocation led by Mayor William Stimson and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'll bow your heads, please. How many followers would come into your presence this morning, Lord? We're grateful for who you are and all that you do. Oh, we thank you that your face and favor has shined upon this city. Lord, for those who are present, those who are listening, I just hope that we'd all be mindful that you're the giver of all good and perfect gifts, and you call upon us to be stewards of those gifts. So as we open this meeting, Heavenly Father, we ask that you would just bless it with your presence. In your son's name we pray. Amen. Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody on this cool chilly Tuesday morning. And welcome to our January 16th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, at this time, please put on the off of the vibrating position, the off of the vibrating Interpersonators is designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, a public hearing, a general item before entering the meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonator designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing, the second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there should be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements ought to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, that should be not, nor undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Well, good morning. Good to see everyone here this morning. As you all know, we're in a winter weather event and encourage you and everybody in your departments, as well as all of our citizens, to be sure to stay tuned in to the Weather Channel or the Weather Stations in Mobile. It's very serious when the weather, when their temperature gets as low as it will be getting tonight, so please be mindful that if you don't need to be out, please don't be out riding around. And I would hope that you would also be mindful of those that maybe could use our assistance in staying warm. This time, I'd like to call on Chief, please, let's go to Police Chief, who do the Officer of the Month.
Good morning. So today's my distinct privilege to bring before you today Officer Alex Russell. He has been selected, nominated, and approved to be the Officer of the Month for December of 2023. He is recognized for his proactive approach to pursuing certainly wanted suspects, hotspot policing, and all the things that we're doing. You know, I could go in and outline it. He ended up servicing 104 calls for service for the entire month. On top of those calls, 16 felony arrests and 27 misdemeanors. But more importantly than that, he's been on the department for approximately three years, and one of the things we push on the department is attitude, appearance, competence, and service. And this fine young man today is the one that he is the embodiment of those things that we're pushing. And so if we could duplicate him 20 more times, I think we'd be in great shape. But without all that being said, congratulations on a job well done.
Congratulations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Want to introduce to you our Firefighter of the Month for the month of December 2023, Captain Seth Blitch. Captain Blitch has a passion for helping fellow firefighters elevate their abilities. He volunteers in our recruit school. He's in charge of our ladder truck. Anytime there's any new training that needs to be done, he researches it out, and he is the ringleader to once they push the torch to train our firefighters. He also is a paramedic. Sometimes he's assigned to our rescue trucks and ambulance. At the same time, he owns a boat power license as a captain, and we use him to back up and reserve, to guide our boat. He also oversees winches in our fleet. At the same time, believe it or not, he also trains with the Mobile Police Department SWAT team. He's a primary instructor to help him enforceable entry. During his time, as you can see, he's highly medaled up. He's been with us since 2011. He got promoted to driver in 2016, and he just made captain on last year. And he's one of our finest. He never stopped working, never stops training. He epitomizes what we should be on the Mobile Fire and Rescue Department. At this time, I introduce you Firefighter of the Month, Captain Seth Blitch.
Congratulations.
So having had the opportunity to meet with the Firefighter of the Month and the Policeman of the Month, both of the chiefs made comments about attitudes, that they just had terrific attitudes. In just a moment, we'll make some remarks having to do with some accreditations that we've recently received in Public Works and Parks and Rec. But it really comes down to attitudes, and today, and leadership promises for every day, just kind of a coincidence, but it was talking about attitudes. And this is what it said, because this refers to individuals and to teams. Our attitudes color our whole personality. We cannot always choose what happens to us, but we can choose our attitude toward each situation. The winner's edge is in his attitude, not his aptitude, IQ, or talent. The secret to a cheerful heart is filling our minds with thoughts that are true, pure, and lovely, and the thoughts that dwell on the good things in life. Great teams come from having great talent plus great attitudes. So I thought that was very timely in light of having the Officer of the Months, plus my remarks about accreditations. So you've always heard, Alicia, you've been hearing for a very long period of time about police accreditations and fire department accreditations. But today, we're very fortunate to have with us the, one of the board members, Robert Garland, with the National Association of the American, excuse me, the American Public Works Association, and he's going to present an award to Shonda Smith for our recently acknowledged Public Works accreditation. So Mr. Garland, if you and Shonda can come to the podium, please. So actually, Mr. Garland will actually make some remarks, and then we'll do the presentation.
It seems like the odor I get, the more glasses I carry. So these are my reading glasses. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having me here. I'm from sunny South Florida, and it was amazing walking out the front door this morning to that blizzard wind I saw. But good morning, Mayor, council members, residents of Mobile, Alabama. For the record, again, my name is Robert Garland. I have the privilege of serving on the National Board of Directors for the American Public Works Association, or APWA. I represent members from Region Four, which includes Alabama Chapter. I'd like to thank the commission for allowing your employees to participate in APWA, because it's a really good return on your investment. I'd also like to thank you, members of the council, for your support of the accreditation process. It demonstrates your commitment to the city staff and your commitment to the residents of Mobile, Alabama, to provide higher levels of service while maintaining affordable user rates, and I'd like to commend you for that. Now, accreditation is an achievement that recognizes the commitment of the city and your Public Works Department to provide continuous improvements in the delivery of the services that they provide to the residents every day. Accreditation recognizes that your department's policies and procedures align with internationally recognized best practices, internationally best practices. Benefits to the department and the city include increased efficiency, improved processes, succession planning, which is very important in today's marketplace, and probably most important of all is customer satisfaction. It's not an easy process. It starts with a self-assessment by your staff of existing policies and procedures, refining those policies and procedures to upgrade them to meet recognized best practices. And then there's an evaluation of a third party or peer review of APWA evaluation team that comes in. In this case, we had a team of evaluators from Wisconsin, North Carolina, and Virginia, and that team reviewed 413 of the city's practices to confirm your compliance with, again, internationally best practices. And I'm proud to report that the department complete or achieved compliance with all 413 practices that were upgraded. In addition, the evaluators, evaluators recognized one model practice, organization and strategic planning. I think this is very, again, key to the development of our staff, and I'm just going to quote what they said. "The strategic plan was well thought out and included both 1,000-day and 100-day strategic planning, as well as looking back to compare what was completed during that timeframe and how to improve moving forward." Also, not a model practice, the evaluators also gave honorable mention to the following, the Emergency Response Pocket Guide, which is a pocket guide that outlines emergency procedures for staff. If it comes from preparing roads from winter storms, like we had tonight, maybe tomorrow, or the clearing the roads after a tornado or disaster, you know, it's the public works officials that clean the roads so that the fire departments and police departments can do their jobs. Public Works is the first to respond, typically the last to leave. True first responders. Also, another honorable mention was a training incentive. The department has an incentive or point system that encourages and gives incentives for employees to not only to pursue professional training, but also to be more active in the communities they serve. Something I'm going to try to take back to my company as well. It was something I'd never heard of. And these model practices will now be shared by APWA staff with other communities across North America who are going through the accreditation process. They'll be using your models as part of their guidelines. So congratulations. This milestone does place the city in a distinguished group. There are only 201 accredited agencies throughout North America, and the city's Public Works Department is the first to be accredited in the state of Alabama. I'd like to say my congratulations to, I guess, former director Jim Delap, and also the current executive director, Shonda Smith, and also a shout out to Sherri Boucher and all of the Public Works staff members. It wasn't an easy process. I talked to Sherri this morning, and she was talking about how she pulled her hair out at times, but getting through it was really a team-building experience and was something they're looking for for their re-accreditation, which is required every three years. So on behalf of the American Public Works Association and the Board of Directors, I'd like to recognize the city of Mobile, Alabama, and the entire Public Works Department on this outstanding achievement. Job well done.
So this time, I'd also like to point out that it's not just Public Works that has received recent accreditation, it's also our Parks and Rec Department. There are like 10,000 Parks and Rec Departments recognized across the United States, and we were the 206th out of the 10,000, number 206th to be accredited, which, again, you heard everything that Mr. Garland had to say about Public Works accreditation. The identical comments could be made about our Parks and Rec haven't been accredited also. I'd also like to point out that not only do we have the CAPRA accreditation, which is police and fire, which is police, no CAP, yeah, okay, CAPRA is the ambulance, CALIA is the police, we have the APWA, but also when you look at the accreditations at the fire department, ISO 1 rated, we have found out that Mobile is the second city with only two cities in the United States that have all of these accreditations. That is amazing. I mean, for all, for all of our employees to recognize that we have set a goal standard, and that's what we're trying to achieve, but more so for all of our citizens to realize that we're trying to operate at that goal standard to make sure that you have the very best delivery of services, and that we're continually updating and looking at our practice to make sure that we're on the leading edge of that. You know, somebody could probably say, well, Mayor, that's pretty good that you, you know, under your administration, you did that. Well, let me say you this, I'm going to give you a huge disclaimer right now. I did not challenge the fire department to achieve any accreditation. It was the fire chief, Mark Seeler, that came to me and said, will you support this? And then the, we had to do the ISO 1, and then accreditation, again, they came and said, Mayor, will you support this? When it came to the Parks and Rec, again, it was the Shonda Smith that came and said, Mayor, this is something I think that we can do. And so all of these accreditation have been driven from the bottom up, you know, not from the top down, which to me is indicative of the type of leadership that we have at our executive director level, as well as just all of our employees. So I think we need to give our directors and executive directors and all of our employees another big round of applause. I would also tell you this, that does not mean that we will fail, that we won't fail to pick up your garbage. Every now and then, we, you know, we may miss your garbage, we may not fill a pothole, and we don't get everything 100% right, because we are all human, but we do have the process and procedures in place to try to make sure that we get it right. So thank you all very much. That concludes my remarks, Mr. President.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Again, you was the one that hired those individuals. So, yeah, congratulations to you too. Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
May I properly move in a second in a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Kent Blackington.
Morning.
Morning.
Appreciate the time today. I'm here, I believe all of you had a copy of the annual report for the Mobile Area Lodging Corporation. So I'll just make the highlights, everything that I have is, the backup is behind it. But the Mobile Area Lodging Corporation is the entity that was, that was formed to manage the assessments collected through the Tourism Improvement District. It's the, the board's made up of hotel owners, restaurant owners, and attractions representatives, as long as, as well as Councilman Penn is on the board, and David Clark from Visit Mobile. So we represent the owners that benefit from this. We decided to assess ourselves three years ago, $1 per room night for everybody that stays in our lodging properties within the, within the district. The district consists of 63 hotels within the city of Mobile, and with some, with some other, there's some limitations on some of those hotels, like size of rooms and whatever, but for the most part, 63 hotels participate in the Tourism Improvement District. Since we started the district, we've collected over $3.3 million, and that is used to market Mobile and tell Mobile's story and improve the visitor experience for Mobile. So this year, as a recap, we did one, we collected another $1.2 million in '23, and I'll just highlight kind of what we do with that, what our plans are for the future. The first thing we do is data collection. You know, we collect a lot of data through GPS tracking and even credit cards, which is a little creepy, but it's out there, so we use it. What we did is we tracked 1.4 million visitors that come into Mobile, and 55% of those visitors stay overnight. We took the commuters and people that come in and out of the city out of that information, so we're talking about true people. We know where they came from, so we use that information on where to market to. Our top seven or so markets, three of them are in Alabama. Birmingham is our top market, Huntsville, and Montgomery, but what we focus on is more like New Orleans, Atlanta, Biloxi, Houston, Baton Rouge, Jackson. Those are our top seven markets that come into Mobile. And interestingly enough, where they spend the most money, now this isn't just lodging, this is, this is all money that they spend, is in 36606 and 36608. You would think it may be downtown, but that's third place over those two other zip codes. The largest thing we do, for the most part, is digital advertising. Obviously, we spend about 70% of the money on advertising. The largest piece of that is through Expedia. Expedia is the world's largest booking engine. We spent $225,000 through Expedia advertising for the hotels that are in this district through Expedia. From that, we got $1.6 million in lodging revenue. We had 9,100 room nights, and out of the 63 hotels that participate in the district, we put money from those ads into 53 of those hotels. So everybody's benefiting from what we're doing. Next, we do search engine optimization, which I think everybody hears, but 81,000 impressions with 8,000 click-throughs. The digital advertising campaign is another entity, but digital advertising, 28,000 visitors, 6.5 million in spend to Mobile, and 2.9 unique visitors to those pages in Mobile. I think it's important to note that all this digital stuff is trackable, so when they click on these ads or they see these ads and they click on them, they go to a landing page that focuses on the TID. It is on Visit Mobile's website, but it is focused on the 63 hotels that participate in the TID. We also are able to do print advertising, which I think most of you have seen, but we were in Travel and Leisure, Alabama Magazine, USA Today, and Good Grit. Since we started the campaign, we have billboards on the thoroughfares into the city, each focusing on those districts. So eastbound, westbound, I-10, one focused on Tillman's Corner area, the I-65 southbound is focused on the Belt Line and the Westmobile area, and the other I-10 westbound is focused on downtown. We also produced two campaign videos, which I can talk about for our future stuff, but we, we spent the money to produce those videos, and we were also able to assist in advertising for Carnival Cruise and for Avelo Airlines. So through all these things, when you look back at 2019, a lot of it is in rate that we gained, but we've been able to increase, or at least participate in increasing the lodging tax to the city by 26% since 2019. The other thing that we get to do is capital investment, so we do have a section of our budget that goes to capital. I know over the years, we've helped purchase the basketball and volleyball courts for sports tourism. We have that same, we have an approval to assist in the tennis center complex if needed. I know we're waiting on a master plan for that. We've approved money to go to the soccer complex out in the county to help with that. And we don't have millions and millions of dollars, but if we need to do like landscaping and do some other stuff and help out, we are here to assist with that. The other thing we're doing this year is interactive visitor kiosks, so kiosks that collect information from the people that are here, but also give out information while those visitors in Mobile. So we've ordered three or four of those. We're going to have those strategically placed, whether it's in airports or on Dauphin Civic Center, Convention Center, and we have the ability to do more of those. So we'll, we'll deploy those, test those out, see how they go. But, but I'll tell you, one of the biggest things we did with some of our contingency money is there was a desire of the hotels out on the Westmobile and the Tillman's Corner area to have a little bit more security presence. Some of these hotels just don't have a budget to be able to hire an outside security firm or whatever, so we have gone ahead and hired a security firm that hits 36 hotels on the overnight hours in Westmobile and Tillman's Corner. So we are, we are supplying and paying for security services on overnight hours to 36 of those hotels, and that's been the biggest win from the hoteliers' perspective. They're the happiest with it. It's just presence, and it's a deterrent, but it's things they can't do on their own. So it's things that we have the ability through this program to do. We also provide virtual photography for these hotels, and we've actually opened that up to restaurants and attractions. That is free, that's part of our advertising to them, so they can do virtual photography on Google and have 360 threshold views. So it's all been really positive so far. Next year, we are budgeted again to do about a 1.2 million, probably a conservative budget, but we like to budget conservatively. Couple of the new things we'll be doing, we'll be continuing on all this digital advertising, and again, I think Expedia is the biggest one, and that's the biggest bang for your buck, but we're going to, we're going to embark on GDS advertising. GDS stands for Global Distribution System. It's the reservation system that airlines use, rental cars use, hotels use. So what we're going to do is we're trying to take the people that are booking into Daphne or Pascagoula, and we're serving advertisements up to those agents as they're booking for business travelers and trying to get, pull them into Mobile instead of staying in those fringe areas. We just started that this week. We're going to embark on some more convention and meeting ads, so we'll do some more meeting and convention ads, familiarization trips as well, bringing in big meeting planners, travel writers, continue to tell the story of Mobile. And then with the video we created, we're embarking on streaming advertising commercials. So with the information we get from the data, we know people in Atlanta and Houston and Baton Rouge, and all these people are traveling to Mobile, so we get to focus and serve those ads and those commercials when they're watching Netflix or Prime or Hulu or all the streaming services. So that's new for us next year. We have some capital ideas about, we'll, we'll continue the security thing. That's, that's something the hoteliers have really enjoyed. Maybe a Dauphin Street gateway, wayfinding signage for downtown.
Yeah, let me ask a question. You said that Daphne, why would people be staying in Daphne and Pascagoula? I mean, besides Mobile?
I don't know. I mean, it's convenience on the internet, it's conveniences on the interstate. We do know those, we do know the hotels in Daphne, we do know the hotels in Saraland do really well, so what we're trying to do is serve those ads to those people that are trying to get that and shift that share of business down into Mobile. Some of it could be location-based. This is mostly towards business travelers, so people that travel here for business. I think if you're at CMNS Calvert, Saraland's probably a better option than coming all the way into Mobile, whether it's Westmobile or Tillman's Corner or downtown. So there's some of that there, but I think there's other business out there that we can bring into Mobile as well.
And a question, a comment from the council. Mr. Dave and Mr. Penn.
Sir.
Mike, not on.
I appreciate the Lodging Association working with the conventions and Visitors Bureau, and Mr. Clark to come up with this program, which as far as I can tell, has worked very, very well, and appreciate the efforts you and all of your colleagues have made. And so I only have one question, and it's just kind of a data-driven question on, so what was the reason for the spikes in November and December of '21?
Give me a second.
If you don't, if you don't have it right on top of your head, that's fine. I'm just looking at this bar chart, and so you have these, these spikes in November and December of '21. I was curious, but you can get back to me on that.
Some of those are, some of it's the way it's collected, and I think we had some hotels that were either delinquent or had some past due stuff that caught up at that time. I know that the November, December numbers were part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Kent, thank you so much for coming down. You're doing an amazing job as president and the rest of the board. I had the opportunity, of course, be on as a non-voting board member, but if you haven't had the opportunity to look at all the data and the information and how they're marketing to the different cities, it's just amazing. And they're doing a great job, even from the standpoint of giving capital contributions to the African town here at this house, to the basketball volleyball court. We know that is huge, and just throughout this nation where people traveling with their, their basketball team and volleyball team. This is, I mean, Mobile Area Lodging Corporation is, is doing a great job, so thank you so much for your service.
Appreciate it. Yeah, the Heritage House was our biggest capital expenditure, so we just helped them push it over the finish line, get their landscaping done, and use some office furniture to get them open, so we helped them.
Mr. President. Mr. Carroll, Mr. Carroll and Ms. Gregory.
Well, let me offer up a great thank you. See, I'm one of those AAU basketball coaches that used to have to scuffle when the Sheriff's Department guys helped put the floor out the night before the tournaments. That's been 10, 12 years ago, when we first started bringing those tournaments here. So let me say thank you, guys, because now the So let me say thank you, guys, because now the setup is totally different. And between you guys and Visit Mobile and Danny Cordy, I mean, we're able to now bring in huge tournaments from YBOA, USSA to AAU, it's just tremendous. So we really appreciate the help that comes from you guys.
Mr. President.
For the help.
Yes, uh, Mr., Miss Gregory and Mr. Woods.
Thanks for coming down and for sharing this report, and, uh, great job. We really appreciate it. Um, in watching some of the, uh, local sporting events on TV, I always have a huge smile when our advertising comes on. And to see that video about Mobile, that is such a super spot that y'all have. Uh, great work on that. It really shows Mobile, it's just so upbeat. Um, it shows so much of the landscape and the amenities and things that we have to offer here in Mobile, so I think that's really what it's all about. I'm also really interested to see your, um, streaming, um, advertising and how all that will work.
Yeah.
That will be really cool, so I'll be looking forward to, to seeing that. I mean, the way things are changing in the way of advertising and promotions these days, I mean, it's kind of hard to keep up. So y'all do a great job.
We've had to pivot a few times away from things that may not work as well and try new things, but.
Well, there's just so many different avenues out there, so you all do a terrific job of keeping, you know, your, your finger on the pulse and knowing how to reach the greatest segment of people to, to come and visit Mobile.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we wouldn't have this opportunity without this money. There's just no doubt. We wouldn't have the resources to be able to market this way, and, and that's why we did it.
Well, it's great to know that it's working and it's being well-spent.
Mr. Woods?
Um, yes, sir, just a quick question. I, I thank you for all you do. I mean, y'all are shedding light and, um, and really doing a lot. I mean, this is amazing. Um, your click-through rate's pretty impressive, too. But, um, just a quick question, uh, you, you mentioned how many, um, members that you have on percentage of, of hotels and, and, uh, you know, properties as a whole across the city. What, what percentage participation do y'all have, um, you know, amongst the whole, the whole?
Participation of collecting the assessment?
As in, uh, members, I guess, active members, I guess.
It's two different entities. The corporation was formed just to manage this. Um, the Lodging Association, we have fifty members. Now, some of that is attractions and other tourist-based things, but we probably have a representative of, um, probably half the hotels that are in this district. Um, so it did take a big collaboration to get the other thirty hotels that aren't members of the association to get to sign on, but, but, but we got it done.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Pass to Belina Green, Belina Green.
Uh, Ms. Green, you need to come on before we start your minutes. No, no talking to audience, please. I ask no talking to audience, please.
Good morning, Councilor. Good morning, Mayor's Office, Doran. Thank you for joining us today. We're gonna do some work.
Ms. Green, you, you got, talk to me.
I address the leaders in this community, the ones that are seen and unseen.
Name, please.
Belina Green, six oh three Delaware Street, the Down the Bay Community is where I serve. Okay, now, this is my, my problem and why I'm here. I'm here to talk about the violence. Now, I'm, I'm a little upset because I was not told or informed about something going on in my community that creates a problem for all of us. So one of the things that we are addressing with you guys, or in the mayor's office as well, is violence with the youth. Today I come before you, and I'm gonna give you a scripture that the Lord told me to give you, okay? And y'all very well know I don't come down here unless I'm called, by God, a real calling. Um, numbers fourteen, six through twelve. Now, let me tell you where I am. I will strike them with pestilent and disinherit them, and I will make you a nation greater and mightier than they are. So that's where I am. See, the work that I've done with the people, I've led right, so God put me over many. Now, as far as the violence in our area that we weren't told about, that we had to find out because I had to much, much prayer and soul-searching and being accountable for the people that I serve in my community. I found out it was a game, but this is what I come to tell you today, no more. We not politicking over that at all, no more, no more in District Two, no more, no more for the community that I serve down the bay. I asked for an endorsement, for you to endorse Lorenzo Green with funding. We demand it because you have our taxpayers' dollar. I ask you to endorse Mr. Cleon because we have researched him, we studied him, we surveyed him, and we work alongside him to know what they're doing, and that they're just not a group of people that say they doing something. They out in the community. I can go to them and access them, and then they will go in Little Johnny's home and Mr. James's home, that's the ex-offender. So I got to see the proven work, and that's what I'm talking about. You get your districts cleaned up. If you love the Lord where you say you love the Lord, you will go out amongst them and get out the comforts of your comfort zone and serve, because that's what this is. And what this also says is a smite has come upon the city because we wouldn't serve God. So I don't know about y'all, but I want my house to be in order when the Lord comes. I pray your strength in the Lord.
Thank you.
Ollie McKinnis.
It's not perfect.
John Carlton. Timothy Hollis.
Timothy Hollis. It's funny that we brush people about minutes when we say nothing to others when their minutes never even started. And then you allow time for them to have rebuttals. Make it make sense. You want us to take y'all serious and you want us to respect y'all. Now, I signed up to speak about pardons since last week. My decriminalization efforts were debunked by some. And we like the reference to cities like Savannah, New Orleans, and Birmingham about doing certain measures, about creating legislation. Well, the mayor of Birmingham, he pardoned fifteen thousand. Mayor Woodfin by the name. He pardoned fifteen thousand people with marijuana offenses within the municipality of Birmingham. He also then testified about the importance of decriminalizations of marijuana before the U.S. Congress. You know, basically, he did what I asked you guys to do. Take it up a notch, take it to the next level. Well, he knows he can't get the work done here in Alabama, so where do you go? You go somewhere higher. That's what using your letterhead is for. A remark was made from the man who sits in the fourth seat about Savannah not, um, using that ordinance to create decriminalization when it was a clear ordinance about decriminalization. They took a notice to what New Orleans did first. New Orleans decriminalized within the city, but that did not make you legal. The state still had the opportunity to, um, apprehend you or make arrests. But what New Orleans said is, we're not gonna make our police department waste tax funds. That's what they did. That was the attempt. So before you debunk, get some information, read things all the way through, read for understanding. Have to agree with the man who sits in seat two. The man who sits in seat four, he does that quite a lot. Every time, it's about uplifting the community or providing resources for areas outside of his. And about forty-six oh dash five five and forty-six oh dash five nine, everybody who presented what they presented, they're well within their rights to create legislation that supports the welfare of our citizens. They're not creating directives, and nothing should have to go to executive session. It should all be done out in the open. Let's, let's do the right thing.
Cleon Jones, senior.
Cleon Jones, eight hundred Contra Street, Down the Bay. I have a five oh one C-three youth organization that I would like to be funded. Uh, it's no secret in Mobile what's going on as far as the gang activity. Uh, I think it's more of a turf than y'all call it a gang activity. I think that y'all should fund more police or as drugs. You have a lot of these kids out here that have addictions. What come with addiction? Violence. And I hear y'all, you know, on TV calling the kids idiots. That does nothing but make thugs, that does nothing but make them more angrier. We should find a solution, we, as a city, not as a community, but as a city. And I'm looking for someone that can help me fund these kids and mentor these kids, put them in programs that they need. We don't have that in Mobile no more, like we did when I was growing up. That's all I have to say.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Reggie Hill regarding ordinances forty-six zero five five and fifty, um, zero five nine and resolution twenty-one zero five four.
Thank you, uh, Madam City Clerk, yeah. I know it's a little cold, but, um, Cleon Jones, senior must have taken some years back or something. I'm not sure what's going on, but, 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 okay. Um, I rise today to address a, uh, a, a few matters listed on today's agenda.
Um, full name?
Excuse me, my apologies, uh, Reggie Hill, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile greetings. My apologies, there's a lot going on in here today. Um, I rise today to address a few matters listed on today's agenda. Let's begin with twenty-one dash zero five four. Uh, this is the eighty thousand dollars for review and consultation on city boards and commissions. Um, first, how much money has already been spent on this project? What evaluation from existing services to the like is available to make sound changes, uh, to the makeup of these former bodies? Also, uh, does the cons, excuse me, does the consulting cover policy recommendations, um, for these same bodies? We all know that there is a zoning, uh, matter and irregularities being, uh, taken up in the court as we speak regarding the border zoning adjustments. So it'd be good to know if this money is going towards reviving those matters. Um, let's look at forty-six dash zero five five and forty-six dash zero, uh, five nine. Section two of each of these seem fair, but section one of each warned, uh, further examination and deliberation. Um, and to begin, we just like to know what in the world were the attorneys doing, um, in all this time since this was introduced? And it seems like this is, again, how we're just wasting resources and still having to come back to the table for these matters that are truly impacting in a negative way, uh, the citizens of Mobile. Um, I don't find it prudent or orderly to entertain more or any amendments to chapter forty-six of the Mobile Municipal Code without force, or, excuse me, without first ordering the adaptable role of community peacekeeping and property training, uh, for the such. Yet, since these two particular general items, um, are itemized today, uh, we need to make sure that we address them. First, forty-six dash ten A, uh, we must define what any properly made request is. Um, appeals for denial must be made before a Mobile City Council. Uh, such reasons for denial must only include laws of the United States. All the other stuff is, uh, really unnecessary and a lot of useless language. Um, let's look at forty-six dash zero five nine, uh, please. The second, whereas, that's in there, it should read desirable that an alternative to these kinds of raids be adopted, not what we're allowing to be put in place right now. Uh, particularly forty-six dash eleven B, exceptions should be stricken, uh, from the record, and only keep subsection one of that, please. And forty-six dash eleven C, as well, exceptions should be stricken, uh, from the record as well. I believe that, um, there's great confidence within warrants being granted from our, our judicial system. I don't think we have to make any other additional means of, uh, policing in the city of Mobile. I also believe that since chapter forty-six is labeled as policing and law enforcement, is that the first or second, but?
Second.
Oh, my apologies, well, we'll have to continue this, but please take those under consideration before passing anything related to chapter forty-six. Thanks for being on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over forty-six zero five five. I amend chapter forty-six, Police Department and Law Enforcement of the Mobile City Code.
Some move? They're proper moving second in discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds?
We had discussion on this in pre-council this morning, and I've been up here reading and just trying to level up with some of the comments and at the, um, suggestion from the city attorney to, to go back and review section eleven forty-four C dash twenty-one of Zogby. I've done that, and as I'm reading it here in section seven, as we discussed, it does, um, make a distinction here. It says, "Members of the council shall not give orders to any subordinates of the mayor, either publicly or privately. Any councilman violating the provisions of this section or voting for a resolution or ordinance in violation of this section shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof shall cease to be a councilman." So I've tried to read through, uh, this, this particular ordinance fifty-five and identify where in this ordinance it directs any employee. And I, I can't find it in here where forty-six fifty-five directs any employee. It seems like it sets a policy for the city of Mobile. Um, it doesn't say the police shall, or the director of, you know, administrative services shall. This just, um, says the city of Mobile, it's their policy to do, you know, this, that, and the other. Um, which is, I think, a, a direct distinction between the next item that's gonna be read, uh, forty-six zero five nine, where it does in fact, you know, give direction, in my opinion. It, it directs, no law enforcement personnel employed by the city of Mobile shall seek executive participant. I think that is a distinction, and it does direct employees, and that's something we need to get some additional information on. But I was hoping, Mr. Woods, Mr. City Attorney, can you help me understand in forty-six zero fifty-five where a direction is given that violates section eleven forty-four C twenty-one, section seven?
Sure. So who does that policy apply to? When I'll answer these questions, I'm answering them. So, so who does that policy apply to?
The city of Mobile?
Right. So it applies to the city of Mobile and the city of Mobile Police Department, right?
Well, that'd be up to them, so my, my, my point is that it is, it is up to the mayor to decide who will disclose the information or up to the mayor to decide who will prepare a legal response. It is up to the mayor who will decide who will report the information to the district attorney's office. It's just the general policy of the government, the city of Mobile, without being specific of the city council to say, "The police department shall disclose." The, you know, director of, you know, administrative services should, you know, direct somebody to prepare. This is just a broad and general.
So here's the thing, and this is where the benefit of actually going to law school helps, because you, you have to descend into the particular and look at the general. So what section eleven forty-four C twenty-one says? Any subordinate of the mayor, any subordinate of the mayor, okay? So that's every single employee, doesn't matter who has to do it. If you're saying Public Works is going to do it, as a council, that authority is limited, and you're setting a policy for a directive that is gonna be issued to them. The difference and the distinction is when you set an ordinance saying somebody is authorized to do something, that's different. That's not a directive. You can probably make that fix. You choose not to do so, that's okay. The second part of it is, is that the general legislative body... The second part of it is, is that the general legislative body, your policies are applicable to the entire city. That is a very broad power, okay? Very broad power. That applies to all citizens. If you all want to set something as a criminal issue, that would apply to everybody, including employees, but not in their employee capacity. What this policy does is it is only limited to city employees, which are all subordinates, save one, Ms. Lambert, all subordinates of the mayor. So unless Ms. Lambert is taking care of it, you are giving a directive generally and broadly to subordinate.
All right, Mr. Woods, I wanted to get specifics at the end to forty-six zero fifty-five, uh, you know, where it specifically directs. I mean, couldn't the mayor just say no? Like, if we say the city of Mobile, uh, should disclose any such recordings in which way or the other, couldn't the mayor just say no? So is that not direct? I mean, we're not directing an employee to do it. We're saying this is the policy, and the mayor could say, "I'm not doing that."
Yes, but here's the conundrum you run into, and it's twofold. Go ahead, Mr. President.
I might ask you one more time. If I had to ask again, would I ask the public sector director to escort you out?
So in any event, what, what I'm trying to tell you is there's a twofold problem here, okay? Because you all are making it in ordinance, right? There is discretion built into eleven forty-four C thirty-seven where, where the mayor is the general authority. He has a certain level of discretion enforcement, but there's no discretion built into this ordinance, all right? If you had built it in, that might be an issue. That, that might not be an issue, but you don't build any authority in it. Twofold the problem. One, as you just read very carefully, eleven forty-four C twenty-one makes it violation of law. That's by state law. However, built into your own ordinances, any general violation of an ordinance is considered a misdemeanor. I know it's a conundrum. It's a complicated one, but as the president stated, that's why we probably need more discussion on this to figure out how to thread the needle. And I think Mr. Linder has done an excellent job threading the needle as closely as possible, but it still causes a problem. It still causes a problem. Doesn't matter if you give a general order to all of the employees through a policy and ordinance, doesn't matter if you give it to one. There is no distinction in eleven forty-four C twenty-one. It does not make a distinction. It simply says publicly, privately, by ordinance or by resolution. Now, do I think anything's going to happen? Probably not. But I don't get to make that call, and so I have to tell you all publicly, this is my legal opinion. Does anything happen? I doubt it. Could it? Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Linder, I appreciate you, um, putting this together, but I'm, I'm really racking my brain. I, I see a, I see a, a conundrum with the other ordinance, you know, where it is, you know, possibly could be construed as, you know, giving a directive to law enforcement personnel or somebody like that. Mr. Linder, in your opinion, when you look at forty-six fifty-five, is there something in here that, you know, there's some high level of concern of we're giving a specific directive to, uh, any subordinate of the city or the mayor? It does, actually, the Zogby doesn't say that it's a violation to give a directive to a subordinate of the ci, of the city, of the, of the city, but a subordinate of the mayor.
Correct.
Is there, is there some directive in here that I'm missing? I mean, I could clearly find one in fifty-nine, but I, 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 I struggle to find anything other than broad and general declarations made in fifty-five.
I, Councilman Reynolds, I, as I've said before, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's the shadow of a problem with fifty-five. Uh, but I think this is something we should probably discuss more closely than, and, you know, and, and again, I think, you know, Mr. Woods and I have a, have a good faith dispute here, I think, as to what the Zogby Act means there. Uh, also, I mean, I'd just point out that the Zogby, it says, let's just go to the direct words. Neither the council nor, this is from eleven forty-four C dash twenty-one. Neither the council nor, this is the final paragraph thereafter, the enumerated powers, which are not, which the council is not limited to. The council has power beyond the seven enumerated powers there. It says without limitation, the council, so. But anyways, in the, the part that we're discussing, neither the council nor any of its members shall direct or request the appointment of any person to or removal from office or in any manner take part in the appointment or removal of officers and employees in the administrative service to the city. What that means to me is that the city council shall not get involved in employment decisions. Except for the purpose of inquiry, members of the council shall deal with the administrative service only through the mayor. Members of the council should not give orders to any subordinates of the mayor, either publicly or privately. Now, again, what that means to me is that the council can set policy that the mayor is then bound to enforce. That is a classic division of legislative versus executive power. The council sets policy, the chief executive is then responsible for implementing it. It might be worthwhile to discuss changes to the specific language to make it clear it's the mayor's duty to implement these policies, but in summary, I just think that the council does have the ability to set general policies that everybody in the city employment has to follow on orders of the mayor.
But we're not, but in your opinion, the way this is written, we're not giving a, a directive to any employee whatsoever, right? The, the general and broad statement of the city of Mobile's policy shall be this. Is it a weak legal argument to construe that as saying a broad, general, uh, policy decision is in fact a directive to an employee?
I think that's a unreasonably broad interpretation of what saying giving a directive is, yes. Or, or, well, maybe not unreasonably. I think we have a reasonable dispute on these matters, but I think, especially as the council attorney here, I have to take the largest extent of the view of your powers that I can reasonably do.
And, and I, I found a, a pretty sizable distinction between forty-six fifty-nine and forty-six fifty-five, I believe, where additional time is certainly necessary to sort of work through forty-six fifty-nine and, you know, it being in violation of eleven forty-four C twenty-one, section seven. Um, but in, in this, for this particular ordinance, do you suggest that maybe we, we tweak the language in a, in a small way, uh, to sort of shore up, you know, the legal position that you've outlined, or that we pass it as written to that? Do you think you need it?
I think further discussion and revision is within the province of the council's authority, and I think it's not a bad idea if that's what people want to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Linder. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Graves.
Mr. President. I, I, I find, I, I have the highest amount of respect for Mr. Woods, but, but I find his argument with respect to this particular one a little hard to swallow. As my colleague has pointed out, as my colleague has pointed out, that that argument, taking to its conclusion, to its necessary and logical, uh, conclusion would be that the city council has no authority to pass anything whatsoever. We, Mr. Woods, let me finish. That, that we couldn't even pass a law saying you were going to be fined ten dollars for speeding, because, because that would be directing someone in the, in the mayor's office or the police department to issue tickets. That's simply not the case.
So Mr. Davis is...
Mr. President. Hold, hold, hold up, hold up, hold up. Mr. Carroll.
What's clearly happening here is that the Zogby Act is being used to weaponize against the council here, to put fear up here. That's what's happening here. The mayor of this city is an administrator. He is the head administrator. Any policy or legislation comes from this council. Anytime there's an ordinance written, anytime, what happens is the ordinance is written or passed by this council, and it is the responsibility of the head administrator of the city to enforce it by using every city employee here. At no time does this council direct any individual or have a direct conversation, whether they direct anyone. But it is not illegal to have a casual conversation with anybody in this building, long as we're not directing anyone. And this council is not directing anyone, not in five-five or five-nine.
So, Mr. President, let me say, I can't agree with Mr. Dave's more, okay? With the exception of, what I'm looking at is, as Mr. Linder said, is broad interpretation. I think it's well crafted. I don't think that there's necessarily going to be an issue, but I'm obligated to tell you that others have said different, okay? I do have a different legal opinion. I'm going to tell you, I want to answer Mr., I want to answer Mr. Reynolds' question. So, Mr. President, here's, here's the question. Where does it give a directive? So you can probably make some tweaks to make this work, all right? It can probably be made totally legal. As Mr. Linder said, that's in your province. You can probably make certain changes. But specifically, shall be the policy of the city of Mobile that any such recordings made or in the custody of Mobile Police Department shall be disclosed in response to any properly made request unless contrary to applicable law. I don't think there's a problem with that, all right? The issue here is a written statement identifying the legal reasons for non-disclosure shall be given by any, to any person within the meaning of Alabama Code thirty-six twenty-one. That's a directive. If we change that to say, if we change that to say, a person is entitled to a written statement identifying the legal reasons, if you say that they're entitled to it, that's a different statement, all right? And then there shall be a seven-day waiting period between the use of force incident and involving law enforcement and recordings and self-reporting, all right? That statement is saying you can't do something, all right? A directive in the affirmative or in the negative is still a directive. If you give them discretion to do so, that changes things, all right? And to Mr. Dave's conversation about the speeding tickets, that, here's the distinction. He, he's right. You all can make any law applicable, but remember, this one only applies to employees. If it's general and broad, it can apply to everybody, or it can apply to citizens. If it does, it is legal. But if it is a directive that is only applicable to employees, you may run into a problem. I think it is well crafted. I think the tweaks can be made to make it legal. And in principle, the administration does not agree, disagree with what you're saying here. That is why we have changed the policy where the practice is offered.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, Mr. Linder, um, I, I'll, I'll ask the council that we move this to the last item on the agenda, uh, so that we can vote on it last and allow enough opportunity for Mr. Linder to, uh, make these very minor corrections. I don't think have any significant impact on the, the law. Is, is that correct, Mr. Linder? Or do we just hold it a week?
I, I really think it would be better to avoid doing revisions on the fly while we're sitting here during the meeting, so I, 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 and again, I, Mr., I, I know we, we, we've had a, with the holidays and everything, we've had those scheduled. Mr. Woods and I are going to meet very soon, uh, by this time next week, I would hope. And, uh, so again, I'll, I'll do whatever Councilwoman Reynolds requests me to do, but I think it would be better to hold this over and, and do this properly rather than try to get it done on the fly while we're going through other business.
But I, I, Mr. President, I want to make sure that there, it's clear in, in my mind that there is a very dis, there is a distinction between fifty-five and fifty-nine. Like, there is, you know, some significant changes or some significant additional information that's required for fifty-nine versus fifty-five. Fifty-five is fairly innocuous, in my opinion, and it sounds like the, the revisions requested would just be a word or two here or there, very minor, you know, in nature, where it doesn't quite go as far as fifty-nine goes. So, um, I, I have no objection to holding it a week so that we can satisfy all parties here and, and make sure we get it right the first time, instead of, you know, creating, you know, this adverse situation amongst, you know, us and some other party, you know? I, I came in here this morning thinking we're going to vote for fifty-five, but, you know, with this just discussion we've had here, it sounds like there maybe could be some very minor tweaks. That's all, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to put this on the record. I said this in pre-council. I know a lot of people might, don't have an opportunity to watch pre, pre-council. Um, forty-six zero five-five, this ordinance was sponsored by Mayor Stimson, the chief who oversees the Mobile Police Department. Um, I really don't understand when you have the ma, the mayor, who is the chief executive officer, who sponsored this ordinance. Um, I don't understand the issue right now. My concern is just moving forward. If we can't pass ordinance, are we not the legislative branch? I mean, I just, I still, I just can't see it. I don't understand it. I don't understand how we created this attack, like someone is attacking a department where clearly the Mobile Police Department put procedures in place based off these ordinance. I think it would be amazing to show unity that if the procedures are in place, why not put an ordinance in place to say the same thing? Isn't that being one? I don't understand that. I don't understand how we got into this, this debate, this angry anger, because we are just trying to create change and, and do the right thing. Whatever the, I, I'm okay if we don't have votes to move forward, I'm fine with it. But, um, if we want to hold it over to make sure that we get this information on correct, but I'm fine with moving forward with what we have, because I believe that if we look at every ordinance, isn't there following what we are putting in place? I mean, I understand that, I, I'm attorney, and you're right, I'm not the lawyer, but he is my lawyer, and he's agreeing with what I'm saying. You're an, you're an attorney, so I'm not knocking your, your opinion. So, because I know you made a statement, you know, if you went to law school, then you'll know this, but he went to law school, and he's our city attorney, and I agree with him. So that, that, that's where I, I, I stand. So thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Um, as the sponsor of this, um, ordinance, the mayor's office, being a sponsor, um, has suggested some very small minor changes. And like I said, if, if we can satisfy, you know, both parties or all parties, then I think we should take a shot at doing that, instead of creating adversity unnecessarily. I think everybody's generally in agreement to move forward as an ordinance, as, um, Mr. Penn has outlined. I don't think this is a, a highly contentious issue. It just, you know, needs to be crafted correctly. So I say we extend the opportunity to the mayor's office to make these minor changes that were suggested by Mr. Woods. And if we can get them done today, I'm, I'm prepared to vote, you know, uh, right away on passing the thing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Woods.
Um, so again, I, I brought this up in pre-council thirty days ago. Um, you know, we, we, we kicked the can on this down the road, um, with, uh, with the promise or the, the intention of getting an attorney general's opinion. Um, and I, I do, would, would like to remind everyone that, uh, that, that I was, um, in favor of this ordinance, not necessarily the, the second one, um, fifty-nine. Um, and then, you know, by shock and awe, we find out once we get here in the chamber, uh, wasn't mentioned in, in pre-council, but by shock and awe, we were, we were told that this, this one was a violation of the Zogby Act. Um, so I, I, you know, just adding this in, the, the, the way I read this, um, as it sits, uh, the, the way I read this is that this isn't directing, um, this isn't any type of direction to a city employee. Um, I mean, it's, you know, there, there's a lot of good laws that, that, you know, supersede anything that we do here. Um, and then, you know, one of those being Alabama state law, I see this as a way that it, it, it quantifies or, or talks about a process being ordinance of, of how, um, you know, the Alabama law is implemented, um, here in the city of Mobile. So, um, uh, I, I, I'll, I'll end with that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. Um, I agree with, um, what Councilman Woods has said. We have talked at length about these amendments, including earlier this morning at our pre- We have talked at length about these amendments, including earlier this morning at our pre-conference, and I left there thinking we had decided that both of these would lay over for forty-five days because of all of the differing opinions, because of the conundrum, the tweaks that need to be made, et cetera. I also asked at our pre-conference meeting and asking again, after we decided, this entire council decided, we would send these amendments to the Attorney General for their opinion as well. We have not even done that. I think given forty-five days so that both attorneys can get together, work through these things, work through the tweaks, however big, however small, is an important thing to do for us, so that when we do get back together with these newly revised documents, we can have a better informed discussion. I have been through a lawsuit filed against this council by the administration for overstepping our bounds. It was not pleasant. I don't want to go there again. I want us to work together on this and figure out what we can and cannot do. We do not direct employees. If, I understand, I, I saw, I saw City Attorney Woods over there, you know, slapping his head. If it directs or if it affects all citizens, that's one thing, like speeding.
Correct.
If we are directing specific employees, that is another. So, again, differing opinions here, we need to get on the same page, and so I would again say, let's hold these over like we decided, forty-five days, work on it, and come back to the table.
And if it helps, I've just sent, based on what Mr. Woods has said here and everything, I think it would be better if we took a little time on this. I've just done a draft that I think addresses the, the way, uh, we were discussing there, and I've circulated that to everyone just now. But, again, I think we'd be better to take our time and do this right rather than do everything right now.
Make a motion to lay over one week.
Is there a second?
There's a motion on the floor already.
There's a second to this motion. I'll second.
Mr. President, there was a motion on the floor already.
A motion to lay over to a date certain supersedes any other motion on the floor, except for those ones enumerated in our rules.
Hold up. A motion to table supersedes anything, not a motion to delay, only a motion to table.
Let's hear it from our attorney.
We need to withdraw the pending motion.
In other discussions. I would say that, uh, this particular ordinance is, um, if it's passed, um, it will take another step towards what the public have been asking for, and that more transparency, uh, between the, uh, the city of Mobile and the public. And, uh, this here, if it's passed today, uh, this will be more, you know, transparency that the public, um, had been asking for, that is allowed under the, uh, state of Alabama law. Um, I do hope that my colleagues do join me in passing this on today, and, uh, again, it will be a win-win for the city and also the, uh, the city just in whole. And again, that's including all the departments and the public. Um, Mr. Dave?
Okay.
Another discussion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We're voting on the original motion, correct?
Right. Yeah, okay. Sister, sister, sister one. Yeah. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Forty-six zero five-nine, ordinance amending chapter forty-six, police department and law enforcement of Mobile City Code.
Motion to lay over forty-five days.
Second.
We're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for forty-five days.
Mr. President, um, forty-five days is February the twenty-ninth. Um, are we taking this up?
Please adjust it to the proper decision. The next council.
CIP resolutions held over. I'm sorry, um, sixty-four zero ten, rezoned property located at twenty-two oh one, twenty-two twenty-three, and twenty-two sixty, Halls Mill Road, from R-one and B-three to B-five.
So moved.
We're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass.
CIP resolutions held over, zero-nine zero thirty-two, transfer funds from Capital Project District Four contingency project to grant match holding account. Twenty-one zero thirty-eight, authorized contract of Harris contracting services for pickleball courts at La Fretta and Hillsdale Parks. Twenty-one zero thirty-nine, authorized contract with Sawgrass Consulting for twenty-twenty-four CIP resurfacing.
So moved. Second.
We're promptly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
On twenty-one zero three-eight, that's the contract for pickleball courts at La Fretta Park and Hillsdale Park. I'm excited that these are moving forward. Last year, we did design on both of these, and so this year, we're getting started with the construction. So, that will be two new pickleball courts at two parks in District Seven, and we look forward to having people come out and take advantage of these pickleball courts.
In other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Resolutions held over. Fourteen eleven oh-two, approve an application seeking permission to incorporate a capital improvement incorporated district and authorizing such incorporation.
Motion to lay over three weeks.
Second.
We're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for three weeks.
Zero-eight zero thirty-three, zero thirty-four, zero thirty-five, and zero thirty-six, approve and purchase orders to Butler Complete Services for clearing of drainage dish at, from Aslava Creek Parkway to Mac Bay Drive, uh, purchase orders to Donahue Chevrolet, for purchase order to Pro, Protek Video LLC for annual telemetry software for MPD Cyber, and for purchase order to Stuns for annual renewal of money dot com software for, uh, MPD Cyber. Twenty-one zero thirty-seven, authorized contract for golf court rentals for Azalea City Golf Course. Forty-zero four-zero, authorized purchase amendment of forty-two thirty-one Shipyard Road.
So moved. Second.
We're promptly moving second in discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Consent resolution's being introduced thirty-one zero four-two through sixty zero four-nine.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
We're promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Thirty-one zero forty-two, authorized mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation for rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. Fifty-eight zero forty-three, assess cost removal of weeds group sixteen forty-eight, sixty zero four-four, zero four-five, and zero four-six, approve award special bonus to the Public Works Employee of the Month, Firefighter of the Month, and Officer of the Month. Sixty zero forty-seven, zero forty-eight, and zero forty-nine, are determine appropriations to Three Circle Church, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central Gulf Coast, and Hope Boxing Academy serve a public purpose and approving payment.
So moved. Second.
We're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
CIP resolutions being introduced twenty-one zero five-zero.
By council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, zero-eight zero fifty-one through sixty zero sixty-one.
By council rules, this will also lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings, forty-one zero six-two, call for public hearing to consider the application of Y-U by Exper, Experiences LLC to operate a shuttle service schedule January the thirtieth.
So moved.
Second.
We're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District One, Councilman, uh, Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this past weekend, um, we had a lot of activities, a lot of things going on. Friday night, I had the opportunity to present the key to the city to some, um, Grammy Award winners here, um, that performed at the Winter Jam. Over about nine thousand people attended this event here in the city of Mobile. Um, so it was a great opportunity, um, to have a great event, um, here in our city at the Mitchell Center. Um, that morning, I had the opportunity to support Mobile United and all, um, Mobile, keep Mobile beautiful as well as love your community with, um, MLK Service Day, um, in the Tomerville community. I want to thank Capitol League for showing up, um, South Alabama for showing up, People United, Avant and Dream for showing up and being a part of that day. We know that Dr. Martin Luther King wasn't just about, um, service from cleaning up the community, but that was a great aspect, um, that we were able to give back. Uh, we moved forward with a peace forum, um, that day, so I want to thank the mayor and the admin, administration, Rob Lasky, for, um, taking the initiative, that idea that I have presented, um, with others to start that conversation, um, and it was a conversation. It wasn't, um, the ending process, um, who's talking about different organizations that are already doing some things here in the city and how we can create a synergy. And, uh, moving forward, we will have an opportunity to hopefully, um, create a plan, so we'll be more meetings coming forward. Can't do everything in one day, um, so a lot of times, um, I know we have so much things that we want to target, especially dealing with youth violence, but we will have an opportunity, um, to have more meetings, to have more discussions, and figure those things out together, um, as a community, as a city, as nonprofits, and as residents here in District One. Um, so thank you to every organization, every speaker, to every pastor that came, and thank you to my colleagues as well that showed up. Um, later on, we had the opportunity to, um, participate in the MLK Gala that was here in Government Plaza. Um, they definitely supported our young people, a lot of people got awards that night, um, and so I had the opportunity to participate with some of my other colleagues, uh, William Carroll and, um, Councilman, um, Small. Um, so we had a great time, and, and then later, we had a busy, we, we did the breakfast with blacks in government as well as the march. Um, and then we had a bridge builder classic, so it was a lot of things taking place here in the city of Mobile, so thank you for everyone that showed up. Um, we had a lot of great things, um, and, uh, let's move forward, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe my colleague has just about told you everything that's happened this past weekend that we've all been involved in, but let me just take a minute and thank, uh, thank the young people that actually came out and helped with the day of service. Uh, as a matter of fact, let me, before I thank the young people, let me step back and thank the group from AARP who came out from VIA in force this weekend to help us in the Camp Brown and on MLK, and also the countless volunteers that we had, uh, Saturday out in the day of service. I really appreciate it. Uh, but it, it, you know, it's my pleasure to say that the Capitol Leaguers came out in force. Uh, we've been talking about youth violence so much, uh, that it was just heartwarming to see so many Capitol Leaguers, not just in District Two, but throughout the city of Mobile, helping in almost every district this weekend, help clean up our city. Uh, it was also impressive to see the lamplighters out this weekend contributing their time at the Blacks in Government breakfasts. We have a lot of young people that are doing so many positive things, but still yet, we're facing a, a dilemma with gun violence among young people in our city between the ages of ten and twenty-four. We need to continue to implement programs and work as hard as we can. We need a strong partnership with the Mobile County Public School System. Uh, as I've said, the Mobile County Public School System is the one place where our kids are there eight hours a day, where they are captivated, where they can be reached, where they're all there, and we can have some program and partnership with there. We're one of the few counties, I think, in this, in the state of Alabama, other than the city schools, that, uh, uh, don't have as strong of a relationship as we should with our public school system, and I'm asking that we continue to look into that, and I know Ms. Gregory's gonna reach out to them along with, uh, Mr. Penn and our president to, uh, make sure we get our representative from the school board here for that public service committee meeting. Uh, it's been a really active weekend also. We've had two incidents this weekend involving gun violence, again, in our city, uh, even though it was just outside our city limits, it affects our city. So, let's really, really continue to work at that. It's saddening to continue to hear about another child's death, a fifteen-year-old and a nine-year-old, fifteen-year-old that passed and a nine-year-old with a, a gunshot wound. It, it's, it's sad to hear those things. So, as we move forward during the year and we establish this, this process, let's look to get this process done and implemented and start having it work for our kids in this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to remind everyone that, uh, tomorrow evening, we will be having a community meeting at Lawn Park at six PM to discuss potential improvements to the park. I hope to see everyone in that surrounding community come out and give their input. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. District Five, Councilman Dave. District Six, Councilman Woods.
No announcements.
District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I too participated in the day of service on, um, Saturday in District Seven. Thanks go out to Mobile United for, again, setting this up, and to all the volunteers who turned out to help pick up all of the litter. Uh, the peace forum was a terrific event. Thank you, Mr. Penn, for hosting and for everyone who came out. And following up on our peace forum, we will be setting up a public safety committee meeting coming up soon. We're looking at dates because we want to make sure to include, uh, a representative from the school board, so we will look at everybody's calendar to schedule that. And, uh, last but not least, um, I want to thank the Ridgeline Revelers and all the Ravine Woods parents for inviting me to come out to be the grand marshal of their neighborhood parade. This is my second year in a row. Thanks to everyone. It was a terrific way to celebrate, it gets all the neighbors out, and it was good to see everyone, so, so thank you. That is all from District Seven.
Thank you, Vice President, and to the citizens of District Three. Uh, this past weekend was a very, uh, busy weekend here in the city of Mobile, especially , uh, celebrating the life and the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And my colleagues had thanked several volunteer groups. Uh, one particular volunteer group that we had in District Three was the Coach Roma, uh, team of, uh, the AKAs, Alpha Kappa Alpha. I'd like to thank them for coming out on Saturday morning to, uh, help us in Downey District Three, uh, in cleaning up, and also the Masona Missionary Baptist Church on yesterday of the day of service they had in the Downey Bay community as far as to clean up the community and everything. On next week, I will be announcing several meetings that's coming up, um, very soon in the communities, so looking out for next week. Anything else from this council? Anything from the administration?
Um, two things. One, Mr. President, I want to just, once again, congratulate all the employees and their teams on the accreditation. On behalf of the mayor's office, it's wonderful that you continue to move the city forward. And two, as we pay homage to, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King on his birthday, celebrating what he lived for and, and what he died for. I think it's, um, it's absolutely amazing that we do so as a city, and want to remind everybody that, um, Dr. King, like, like many other great men, was a proud member of Alpha Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, one of the oldest and coldest in the nation. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
We're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Me as adjourned.